Good evening and welcome to the Abington Township Board of Commissioners Working Session for October 10, 2024. Our first item of business this morning is a motion this evening. Yeah, it's been a long day. A motion to approve the minutes from the working session of September 12, 2024, and I so move.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay. The motion carries. So I see we have a number of folks in the room this evening. Are you all here for the presentation about the land development application at 2241 Old Welsh Road? Yeah? And is there anybody here who wants to speak about the other land development application, LifeCycle Abington? Okay, because what we normally do is comment is either at the beginning or the end. But for, given that you folks came out tonight, we will have that presentation and then we'll have public comment following the presentation, so that you don't have to wait till the very end. And so with that, the first item of business... I was going to push it to the end. So the first item of business is a presentation of Land Development 24-03 by LifeCycle Abington, 1329 Old York Road, Preliminary Final Major Subdivision and Land Development Plan. And who do we have with us this evening?
Hi, good evening. My name is Carrie Nace. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Fox Rothschild here this evening on behalf of the applicant, LifeCycle Women Care.
Good evening, and welcome.
Good evening, thank you. I do have handouts of the presentation if you'd like, if it's easier for you to see.
You can certainly distribute them.
I'm sorry.
We can have them distributed, for sure.
So as I said, this application is before you from LifeCycle Women Care. They're proposing to redevelop the property located at 1329 Old York Road. Just to give a brief background as to who LifeCycle is, they are a nonprofit organization that provides midwife-based gynecological and birth-oriented health care. They currently have a location in Bryn Mawr that's been operating there since 1978, and they're looking to expand their operations and open a new location here at 1329. The building at this location is, there's an existing building. It's previously been used by Rothman. It's been used as a medical office for numerous years. It's remained vacant for a few years. LifeCycle has purchased the property. As I indicated, they're looking to renovate the building and will be using it as a birth center, as well as providing routine gynecological services. What you see here is a rendering of what the proposed building will look like, or what it's anticipated to look like. I'm going to just move over for a moment to give you some orientation here and see if I can... Bring this. Here. So this is the existing property here. You can see the light gray is the current parking lot. This is the access drive parking lots here. Here you can see this is the existing building located in this area. What they're proposing to do is demolish this front portion here, which will provide a bigger front yard setback. They will then build a new addition here. The main center of the building will remain as is, and then they will be building an addition in the rear here, taking up a small portion of parking back in this area. Otherwise, the parking will remain in the same configuration. They are adding two additional ADA parking spaces, which are required by code, also adding this little cutout area here for turnaround for vehicles. Going back. See if I can... Sorry, I'm just trying to go back to my renderings here. So this view, as I said, they'll be providing a greater setback here from the road. This is actually along Old York Road here. This is the existing access drive with the parking lot in the back. We're also proposing a new trash enclosure in this area, which will have a fence around it. And then this is the rear of the building here. You'll see, this is, you come in the access road, parking is back here. This will actually be the main entrance. So the front will not have an entrance. Everybody will come into the rear and come into this area in here. In your packet are just some schematic floor plans. You can see in terms of the birthing suites that they're proposing. And then also, they have some other medical office rooms in terms of, there's lactation consultant, mental health, ultrasound room, those type of amenities as well. Currently, they're anticipating that they will be operating nine to five at any given time. They would anticipate about three to five patients there, but obviously, it's always unknown as to when someone may go in labor, so they do have the ability to have overnight hours as well, in case someone does come in, they're in labor. We did go to the zoning hearing board. We received several variances. One was with regard to the number of parking spaces. Also had some additional relief that we received in terms of perimeter buffer, as well as disturbing some tree protection zones. We also received a special exception to allow the expansion of the non-conforming use, because the medical use is not permitted within this zoning district.
Like literally across the street from the hospital.
This is a...
And it was at Rothman.
This is a copy of the site plan. We did submit preliminary land, preliminary final plans. We are asking for a waiver of land development approval, as well as a waiver to allow this to be viewed in one meeting, preliminary slash final. We received a review letter from the township engineer. We've gone through the comments that were in her letter. We've been working with her. All of the comments in there are, will comply. We've already been in the process of revising the plans and intend to resubmit those plans to comply with those review comments. We also attended the planning commission at their last meeting. We reviewed the plan with them. They were favorable of the plan and what was being proposed, and they did make a favorable recommendation to move forward with approval. As I indicated, we do have several waivers that we're asking for. We have, did submit a waiver letter. It's before you this evening. Certainly, if you'd like, I can run through each of them. Otherwise, if you have questions, I can just answer any questions that you may have with regard to the project or the waivers being asked.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to ask, is Cal with us this evening?
I believe so.
President Hacker, I'm on the call.
Oh, great. Good evening, Cal.
Good evening.
Figured you might want to say a few words about this.
Sure. Applicants Council pretty much did a good job in laying out the project. I believe at the end of her presentation, she had made reference as to whether or not the board would like her to go through the waivers. I think because of the nature of the presentation for the preliminary final, I think it is a good idea to go through each and every waiver. I believe there's a total of five, seven waivers. Other than that, I agree with the presentation. It's pretty straightforward, and, you know, we can discuss the project at a future stage if it goes, if it goes further. Once the council goes through the waivers, if the board would like for me to comment on any of the waivers, I'll be more than happy to.
Definitely. So we can quickly run through them.
Sure, I can do that. And I will let you know, we did submit a waiver letter with our initial application. After getting our review letter, it was determined that some of those waivers were not necessary, so they were removed from the list, and then there were a few additional ones that were added. So most of them are administrative in nature. The first one is a waiver from land development and going through the full land development process, just given the limited nature of the improvements that are being proposed. The second is with regard to the dimension as the parking spaces. Parking spaces are to be 10 by 20. We're proposing 9 by 18. However, the accessible spaces do in fact meet the federal dimensional requirements. The second is the off-street parking areas. Off-street parking areas shall be screened in accordance with requirements of the zoning code relating to buffer areas and yards. We are asking for a waiver to maintain the existing parking lot in its current condition as it relates to the planting of additional deciduous trees. So again, that waiver is really being asked due to the non-conforming nature of the property and keeping those conditions. The additional waiver that was added here under number four is, we are asking for this to be considered preliminary final. Even though we're asking for a waiver of land development, it's still technically preliminary final application. And then the last item is to provide the location size and ownership of all underground and above-ground utilities, and that we are asking for a waiver to not show all of the utilities within 400 feet of the subject property, which I believe is fairly standard waiver, and we did have support from the engineer on that.
Okay. Thank you for that. Cal, is there anything you wish to comment on about these waivers?
President Hacker, yeah, just one comment as it pertains to the parking and dimensions. Even though the parking spaces are 9 by 10, by 9 by 20, exist a non-conforming. Because of the fact that the applicant is milling and overlaying a parking lot, they still cannot meet the requirement of 20 in width. So therefore, a waiver is still required from this section. So instead of providing the parking space to be 10 by 18, it is, I mean, 10 by 20, it is going to remain as 9 by 18, only the business exists a non-conforming.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you, Cal. Any members of the board have questions or comments? Christine, sure.
Thank you. Can we focus a little bit on how the, on the frontage of Old York Road, how that's going to look, you know, in terms of what, how it's going to change and the look of the building? The part of the building that's going to remain is actually a historic piece of architecture, and I wonder how it's going to, you know, what the front of the building you're proposing is going to look like, you know, the new structure in front of it? I don't know if that's a fair question tonight for you or not, but I didn't see it in the...
So this is the, I mean, the rendering in front of you, this is what's being proposed? So this is the new building addition in this little...
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought, I thought you said something about on the Old York Road side of the building, something's going to be knocked down and replaced with something? Did I misunderstand?
Correct. So this is Old York Road here, here's the...
Is that Old York Road?
I'm sorry, this is Old York Road.
Oh, okay.
Here. And so this is the historic piece that you're talking about? It's the middle of the building.
So that's the vision from Old York, sorry.
Correct. That's okay. That's okay. And so this is the historic piece that is remaining.
And that's what's gonna...
Right, and so there is the building here comes up, and it's much closer to the sidewalk. So that area's being demolished and will be, will have a greater setback there, so that we can provide more lawn area.
And what did you say about the main entrance to the building? Is that going to be around the back, or is that the...
Correct, correct. So, there's no entrance here. This is just visual, you know, in terms of creating kind of a front-facing appearance, but there is no entrance there. So they would need to, we anticipate, just given the services that are being provided, that most, most of the patients, majority of patients will be driving. So they would come into the access road and then park back here in the parking lot, and then this is the main entrance here. And that's interior in the parking lot.
Okay, I'm with you. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Bowman, and then Commissioner DiPulcito.
Oddly enough, I've been to this building many times, too. I agree with all the exceptions. I think it's a beautiful reuse of the building. Building was old and outdated anyway, so it's good, I think it's a good plan.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Bowman. Commissioner DiPulcito.
I guess this question might be for Cal. Isn't this, or why isn't this already zoned as a medical use?
It's a good question, since it's been medical use for a long time, forever.
I've received like six cortisone shots, seven x-rays from Rothman there.
Yeah. I don't know, but I think that's something we could look into.
Okay.
Because it does seem odd. Any other comments or questions for members of the board? Commissioner Brown.
What has, and maybe this is a question for, maybe you can go back to the operators and get back to us. What has LifeCycle done in regards to bringing awareness to the disparity in mortality rates among African-American women in birthing? What kinds of activities do they do in the communities where you operate? Because you will be new to Abington, so, you know, I'm looking to see what type of neighbor LifeCycle will be.
Sure. Again, I don't know the answer to that. I can certainly pass that along and be prepared to provide you with some information after this meeting, or even at the next commissioner's meeting. You're welcome.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Okay, so Solicitor Clark, my understanding is that this would move forward through the November meeting to go on the agenda to review and approve the preliminary final plan?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much for your time.
Yep, thank you. Okay. We're going to move on to item two, and this is the presentation of Land Development 24-01, 2241 Old Welsh Road, Preliminary Major Subdivision and Land Development Plan, and we will invite our presenter. And then the residents that are here who wish to speak can speak following the presentation. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is John Anderson with Cornerstone Consulting Engineers and Design Services. We're the civil engineers for the project before you. Behind me are the two development team, Mr. Brad Landis and Mr. David Charo. In case I can't answer some of your questions, you know, they're here to provide those answers. I know you want us to be brief in the presentation. This is a residential subdivision application. This is at the, there's three road frontages along main frontages Old Welsh Road. To the right-hand side of the page is Fairview Avenue, and then to the top side is Parkview Ave. The existing property is about one and a quarter acres. It's in the medium-to-high-density residential district, the R4 district, and our proposal is to maintain the existing dwelling that's on the site today and then provide additional, six additional lots for a total of seven lot subdivision. The darker tan buildings along, there's four along Parkview Ave and two additional along Old Welsh Road. Again, this is in the medium-to-high-density residential district. This is a buy-right application. We didn't need any zoning relief for this application. We are meeting all the code requirements except for the waivers that we presented before the planning commission, and we can go through that in a second. We are in receipt of all the engineers' review letters, the various review letters from the township, and as we indicated to the planning commission, we can address all those comments, and they are, will comply, except for the waivers that we're asking for this evening. We are providing full stormwater management on-site. There will be individual stormwater infiltration basins located on each of the six new homes underneath, mainly underneath the driveway locations. Again, there's four curb cuts onto Parkview. The stormwater management will be underneath each of those driveways, and then the additional homes, the two homes on Old Welsh Road. There will be a stormwater basin underneath the driveway on that property, and in the seventh lot, it's along the side property line. That's basically the presentation. What I can do is I can go through the waiver list if you like, or if you want to ask any questions. We did present to the planning commission. We did get a recommendation of approval. There were two comments on two of our waivers, and when I go through the waiver list, I can go through that, those issues as well.
Okay. Maybe we should do that, and then we'll open it up for comments or questions.
Certainly. The first waiver that we're asking for is a waiver from Section 142408B1. It's a waiver request to allow the use of a stormwater management method called the rational method in lieu of the SCS method. This section of the ordinance requires us to reduce the post-development two-year rate down to the one-year rate. So it only involves the two-year and one-year storms. We are in compliance. We're asking for the use of the rational method in lieu of the SCS method. We are in, we have shown and have provided documentation and reports that indicate all other ordinance requirements with regards to stormwater management have been complied with. The second waiver request is to show existing utilities within 400 feet, very similar to the previous application. For a small project of this nature, to survey 400 feet in all directions is excessive. However, we have provided an aerial survey, aerial mapping within the land development set to show the various surrounding community. We are asking a waiver for showing utilities within 400 feet. The next waiver request is a waiver for widening Parkview Avenue. The ordinance requires that the roadway be widened to a 30-foot cartway. The cartway exists on Parkview. It's approximately 30 feet at the intersection, but as you proceed down Parkview, it reduces down to 24 feet. So typically, we would be required to widen only our half-width. So a 30-foot cartway would mean that 15 feet on our side of the, of the center line of the road would need to be widened, so that would be about three feet in this area, down to two feet in this area, to make it a consistent cartway down. We are asking for a waiver for road widening. That was one of the issues that was discussed at the planning commission. Obviously, the neighbors are here, and I'll let them speak for themselves, but that was one of the issues that they had concerns with. The next issue, number four, is a waiver for street lighting. Street lighting shall be installed along each street and each subdivision, and along each street frontage, abutting a public street in each land development by the subdivider, land developer, and at the expense of the subdivider and land developer. This is a very residential area. There are existing streetlight, there's an existing streetlight at the corner of Old Welsh Road. It's basically in this corner of Old Welsh Road and Fairview. There's another streetlight at the corner of Parkview and Fairview. It is our opinion that the street lighting is adequate, however, your engineer, Mr. Hassan, may have a different opinion of that. The last one is a waiver to allow for proposed slopes in excess of 15%. We have small area on the corner of Lot 1 that will have slopes in excess of 15%. 15% is basically a one-on-six and a half, meaning for every six and a half feet horizontal, you have a one-foot drop. So that's about a 15% slope. We have three-to-one slopes just on the corner of this building, and then there's three-to-one slopes on Lots 6 and 7, and we're trying to mitigate six and seven with retaining walls. Those are the five waivers that we presented to the planning commission.
Thank you. And again, I'll ask our township engineer, Cal Hassan, if he'd like to make any comments regarding those waivers, and then we'll open it up for questions, and then we'll have the residents have the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, President Hacker. I'd like to provide a couple of comments on the waivers by Mr. Anderson. All in all, I am not in opposition of a couple of, maybe three of the waivers. One is the stream bank erosion requirement, the existing conditions plan, obviously, because this specific waiver is pretty common with most projects. As far as the, the Section 14624D1, which is the third waiver that has been requested from the right-of-way with, this was discussed with township personnel, and the personnel does not really take any opposition per se to this waiver. From a safety and serviceability standpoint, it does function the way it is intended to. If the fire company needs to bring their truck down, they will be able to bring the truck down based on the existing available right-of-way. As for the trees and the lighting, let me go back to the lighting. I think what I would like from Mr. Anderson to provide is some kind of a coverage plan that shows us what the existing lighting provides right now, so we can make, we can make a final educated determination on whether or not the additional lighting is going to be required with us. And the last waiver that's being requested here, the excavation and fill cut fill slopes, we're not really concerned with this. We know we can implement design practices that will confirm and assure stabilization of any area that is to be disturbed if it is over 15%. But the street lighting, we would like to see additional information from Mr. Anderson.
Thank you, Cal.
Thank you.
All right, I'll open it up for Commissioner Lanny Martin.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for coming out. This is in my area, and a lot of residents along that street, Fairview, I am part, came, and we had a meeting and discussed it. They also sent me a letter briefly. We, the residents of Park Avenue, those mostly directly, directly affected by the 2241 Old Welsh Road Residential Subdivision project, are writing to express our opposition to the project and to the recommendation made by the planning commission during the September 24, 2024 meeting. They're requesting, and they're going to speak directly about the things that they're requesting. But I wanted to express my concern that the, the spirit of the community being transformed by these changes. I think if, in their expression of how they feel about this development, and they go on and discuss about the different waivers and sense of the street lighting, their concern about safety, and then also the width, making sure that they can have EMS and also access to... They have a resident there that has a child who is disabled, so having access to busing and things like that, and then also about stormwater management and things like that, so that's being addressed. So I just wanted to give voice to their concern, and as always, you know, I'm here to be an advocate and to help as much as I can, and I just hope we can get to a resolution that actually honors the spirit of the community and their feelings about the development as a lot of long-term residents. That particular lot was owned by a long-term resident who passed, and, you know, it's not many places in Ward 5 that you have 1.2 acres sitting there, and so it's a lot of history within that community. But thank you, and I know a lot of people here that want to speak.
Yeah, certainly. Any other comments or questions? Commissioner DiPulcito, and then we'll open it up to the residents.
Thank you, President Hacker. This question is for Cal. Cal, has the county reviewed the plans and the application yet?
Commissioner, yes. The county had completed the review, and a copy should have been submitted to the township. The review was dated May 17, 2024, and in general, the county is, is, is in favor of this project. They do not oppose the application. They feel that it is within general compliance with the neighborhood, and they, and they see no issues with it. And then, you know, obviously, they, they go on to add in their statement that the MCPC generally supports the applicant's proposal, but they deliver that, or the revisions that they are suggesting be made... that they are suggesting be made by the applicant, should the township supervisors wish something.
Okay. Did they make any mentions about sidewalks?
I can tell you right now, they talk about the, the street trees, they talk about the cartway, they talk about driveway, subsurface basin, but no, I don't see anything about sidewalk.
I, I had a meeting with last, I guess Wednesday, yesterday, Thursday, yesterday, with township, and there are five-foot sidewalks, and it's green space, and then it's green space, five-foot sidewalks, and this is all on Fairview. So that's where the sidewalks are.
So if I may, and I apologize for not pointing this out. So along Old Welsh Road, there's an existing sidewalk that's up against the curb line. Along Fairview and Parkview, we are proposing new sidewalk. There will be a four-foot green space.
Is that the yellow line?
So the, the lighter tan is the sidewalk. You can see the curb cuts for the driveways, and then we've got five-foot sidewalk along Parkview and along Fairview with a green area, four-foot green space in between that. So it's, it's offset from the curb line.
Okay. Any other comments or questions from the board? And if not, for those residents who are here to speak tonight, we'll, we'll take public comment, so please feel free to come forward. And we'll have to check Zoom as well to see if anybody wants to speak on this agenda item.
My name is Aaron Conway, and my wife, Julie Allen Conway, and I reside at twenty-two, thirty-three Parkview Avenue. Aside from the property in question, we are the original residents of this block since the recent development. We have witnessed and embraced the evolution of our street into a close-knit, peaceful and harmonious community. We are here today to request a thorough examination of the proposed development project of twenty-two, forty-one Old Welsh Road. We understand that development is a natural part of growth, and we fully support the rights of individuals and businesses to pursue opportunities. However, there is a difference between leveraging an opportunity and exploiting one. Our request is not about resisting progress. It is about ensuring that progress enhances the unique qualities of our community, which include a family-friendly, safe, clean, and organized environment for current and future generations. We recognize that economic factors play a significant role in decision-making, and we respect the property owner's rights. At the same time, we believe it is our, it is the responsibility of our community officials to balance those interests with the protections for the neighborhood at large. As residents, we understand the nuances of our block better than anyone, and we ask for consideration of our lived experience and our concerns. As taxpayers and stakeholders in this process, we respectfully request the following: a safe and appropriate lighting solution, amend the slope waiver to fifteen percent, other than the obvious side on Fairview. Address street nonconformity, and clear, and then a clear staging and removal plan. Specifically around this, we ask for a detailed plan for staging and removal and management of materials, equipment, and vehicles related to this project to minimize disruption to our daily lives. In addition, before finalizing plans, we request an independent environmental impact assessment for the proposed development, and I would add to that the lighting suggestion that came up just earlier. An independent infrastructure impact assessment as well. Lastly, we ask for improved written communication from the township, ensuring that it is timely and transparent. This will allow us to stay informed and engaged in the process that directly affects our families, our communities, and our daily lives. And if you'd like, we can submit again the original letter of concerns that our neighbor, Deborah Kendra, which was shared with Commissioner Laney Martin on or about September twenty-six, two thousand twenty-four. This letter details our concerns more fully and provides additional context for our request. Thank you for your time, consideration, and commitment to a fair process that serves the interests to all involved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Scott Everslog. I reside at twenty-two, twenty-nine Parkview Avenue, Mr. Conway's adjacent neighbor. And as he, as he shared, we are a wonderful block that has its own unique character. We're a supportive group. I, I would venture to say that we're the type of block and neighborhood that Abington Township would aspire to be. We're diverse in many ways, and supportive and caring of one another. We've raised each other's kids, and it's been, it's been a wonderful place to live here at Abington Township. Speaking on behalf of several of our neighbors, and trying to just share some of our perspectives on this, but do want to share that there is some emotion from those of us on the block around the concerns about the change in character of, of the neighborhood with this, with this potential development. We also want to understand the privilege that we have had. We, as was shared, there's not many spaces in the township to have that level of open space. It was, it was a wonderful privilege. We had a great neighbor in Ms. Rita who was there that allowed, you know, our kids to play there and to walk our dogs, and it became kind of a neighborhood space. So we recognize that privilege. Unfortunately, we, we knew that that would some, would at some point come to an end, and we, and here we are at that point. So we're looking for hopefully a common sense way to move forward that respects both the neighborhood, the character of the neighborhood, and the potential for developers to, to grow here, because we know that that's part of what the township is part of as well. So we know that the buyer and developer have presented a buyright plan with few variances, and while it's in a R four high-density zoning area, and we're concerned with the density of that high density, we also realize they are somewhat limited in what you can do to authorize such a plan that would, that's presented by right. So while we don't love it, we understand that there's, there's perhaps some inevitability with that aspect of it. I'm having a little bit more difficulty reconciling some of the waiver requests that have been made. We have certainly some concerns that have been expressed already. One such, one such concern is some of the stormwater that's, that's, has been problematic on, on, on the street. That said, that issue was brought to engineers, and engineers have vetted that and determined that's, that the, that the plan would meet that. And so in deference to that expertise, I understand that and don't have any grounds really to, to challenge that waiver if it were to be granted. Some of the other, other waivers that are being requested, we're not leaning on, on the expertise of anyone. We're leaning on the, the request from the buyer for what seems to be a convenience, a developer, what seems to be a convenience issue. The neighbors here and at the planning commission talked about some of the safety concerns in the street, the parking on both sides, the single, the, the, the single-way traffic in both directions, both on Fairview and Parkview. And I, I fail to see why that waiver for the width of the road would be, would be granted. It's a safety concern. There's a code and an ordinance around the, the road width for a purpose, and that's one of the responsibilities that the buyer assumes when they seek development. So with, with, with street lighting and with the width of the road, that was something they, they knew. They're presenting the plan. I see no reason why we would offer waivers for that as well. So I request as much common sense and thorough review as we can to not grant those waivers. The slopes, I have less of an expertise on, and don't, it doesn't feel, I don't have much of, much of a grounds for other than kind of a hunch, but I will say that the, the schematics and drawings that were presented at the planning commission were shown on a flat surface with no grade, and that's just not the reality of what that block is. And so I'm assuming that that's been appropriately vetted by the planning commission or not, but I haven't heard to speak on that, other than the comments just a few moments ago. It spoke to the grade a little bit, but there are some slope concerns that are connected with stormwater. So appreciate the township commissioners giving me, Board Commissioner giving me a few moments. I thank you for your service, and thank you for your consideration of our requests.
Thank you for coming out. Is there anyone else here who wishes to speak to this application?
First of all, there's been a lot of land that's been for sale in the Cressmont area and that area of Roslyn as you start to move into the, it's, yes, it's medium-high density, and it's very dense, and you're adding more and more to the point where it's going to be unlivable, and you're not being honest about it. There's been areas of land that have been for sale for less than a hundred thousand. I was told thirty thousand land was selling for, and the township has made no effort to purchase any of it and preserve green space. There is area that you can afford to buy that was very inexpensive, that people pointed to me in that neighborhood, and there's no attempt to buy green space. Meanwhile, you're bringing in one after another, and they're coming quick, of another person wanting to develop space, wanting to develop here, or wanting to do this there. The green space is disappearing. That is an area that also has an issue with all these apartments coming from the Hap or Horsom area, and they're coming from Upper Dublin. There's tons of traffic that hasn't even come here yet, but it's going to. And that area is becoming less and less livable, and there's many people there who've had the house, that they live in the house their great-grandparents bought, not even bought, built. There's a lot of very longtime homeowners there, and preserving green space is very important. That's a very historical area there, and there's no reason why it should be overwhelmed with development when there's affordable land that you could be buying right now, and you're not doing it. And you prefer to just develop and develop. The schools are struggling, the accidents are severe here, and the quality of life has gone really down, and you can afford to buy green space, and I think it should be an absolute priority at this point, and it hasn't been. Your priority has been making bike lanes where it's too dangerous to bike, and we're losing trees all over the place, and you just look the other way, and that's a few trees, we're gonna, I mean, four feet of green space here, it's not green space, this is nothing. You're changing the whole area in a very ugly way, and then the next development is coming because there's a lot of open areas there, and it's going to destroy the lifestyle people are used to, and the taxes are going to go up. Eventually, the taxes are going to go up to the point where many people in that area are going to lose their homes, because there's a lot of people there struggling, and I meet them, and there's no help. I, that's what I wanted to talk to. Art Hayward's office went to a lot of trouble to help a struggling homeowner in a way that no one else did, and help is hard to come by. Jordan there was particularly helpful. That's the only office I've went to where there was any help at all, and people can't afford higher and higher taxes, and we're going to be paying for it in the schools and the policing, and we're always ending up with the infrastructure bills that you're not telling us about, and we'd much rather have green space. This area looks urban, and it's filthy, and if you're going to tell me a decayed laundromat looks good to you, then there's something wrong. And when I come here and talk about, and I see you didn't take it, but when I come here and talk about horrendous blight and garbage, and it's in the creek, and I don't look good, I don't, sorry, but I don't think you look good if you're going to complain about me talking about the blight, and I have had some success fixing it. We should have better street cleaning. We're not getting it. We're prioritizing developers too much and not the people who live here, and that's why we have people living in horrendous situations. We want green space, and some of that could be bought, and it was really cheap, and it's still some of it available, and you're not buying any of it, and it would be great if you did. It's not, it's not even a hundred thousand it was going for. You should be buying green space.
Thank you. I saw someone else that wanted to get up earlier.
Hi, good evening. My name is Shannon Jones. I'm at two-two-two-five Parkview Avenue. I do apologize, my husband was not able to make it, but as Commissioner Martin mentioned, I am the young family that has the young adult with special needs, and my main concern is the widening of the street. My son currently receives door-to-door service to and from school, and it is, at the current state, extremely difficult for, since we live at a dead end, for the bus to even maneuver to try to turn around. We have to make sure that we have a plan in place every single day. When the bus picks up, we need to make sure that there is no cars in our driveway so that the, that the bus has access to pull directly into our driveway and out. If, because our street is a two-sided parking street, if someone is parked on one side of the street, it makes it extremely difficult. The bus literally takes probably a good five minutes to make multiple turns to try to access the space. In addition to, we mentioned emergency access for if an EMM and/or the fire department had to come down to my block. My son does suffer from epilepsy, so there has been occasions where an EMM had to have, has had to come to my house. Literally, they can make it up the block. However, again, if there's anything or anyone in our driveway, they have to back up down the street, which sometimes takes several, several steps in order to get down the block to be able to go to Abingdon Memorial Hospital. So my main concern is the widening of the street, and I'm just speaking on my behalf. I know some of my other neighbors have additional concerns, which are also concerns with my, of mine, but selfishly, mine is the width, the widening of the street. Thank you so much for your time today. I appreciate it.
Thank you for your comments.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Shanlena Everslog. I live at twenty-two, twenty... You okay? Okay. I live at twenty-two, twenty-nine Parkview Avenue. I do agree with Scott and with Aaron, who spoke about the mechanics and the engineering part of it. I just want to just stress, as Ms. Martin was talking about the spirit of our neighborhood, we have a very unique block, meaning that it's small, is a dead end, and I would just encourage anyone to just drive up our block when it's dark, no moon out, because you can't see in front of your face, and then try, without pulling into somebody's driveway, to back out, to go back out to Fairview Avenue. See, all this stuff looks good on paper, but to execute it, to actually live there and do our day-by-day, even through all the seasons, is challenging. So this is one of the things that I just want to convey. If you come and experience what we experience, then you will understand what our concerns are. These aren't just pull out of the sky and we just want to huff and puff. It's not that at all. We welcome this. I mean, we wish it stayed green, but we knew that this day was going to happen, and I did speak with the builder, the owner, and he does know how I feel about this. I still say three. I still say three. I really feel as though that four on that block is just excessive. I asked him numerous times in, you know, very candid conversations, if we could just do three. He has told me respectfully that you all, well, you all, but he was granted to build as many as he can, which, once again, I just feel like you should have a responsibility in looking at where you're building. It's not commercial, you're not building like the pommes, you know? These are where people live. We know how the block operates. But anyway, that's all I just wanted to put on record. So thank you for hearing me out, and you all have a nice evening.
Thank you. Anyone else present that wishes to speak?
Hi, my name's Deb Kempis-Dekendra, and I live on the twenty-two-hundred block of Parkview Avenue. Just one thing I wanted to, a few things I wanted to bring up this evening. I heard for the first time today that a waiver was requested. I heard for the first time today that a waiver was requested in regards to the width of our road. The width of our road is a nonconformity. It is not 30 feet wide. That doesn't require a waiver. That requires something else by the township. So on that basis, I don't think we're ready to move forward with this application. I believe the builder needs to now go for a zoning, go through zoning and he has to take those steps if he does not want to. He has to go through some type of hardship if he does not want to widen the road. I also heard that if he did widen the road, he's only widening widening that road, which is a no outlet road where he's developing. Well, what about the rest of the road? It's still nonconforming. It could be wider so that the vehicles that need to get down there, trash truck, paramedics, whatever comes, the whole road should have to be widened, not just the section that's being developed. I also want to say that I really do support my community and what they said. We are a very tight knit group and we do understand that there is going to be a development, but we would like to use some sense and not have overpopulating to where we have concerns that we haven't had in, you know, 25 years of a neighborhood. So thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening. My name is Katura Singleton. I live at 1821 Fairview Avenue. I really just came up to say that I just agree with all my neighbors and with everything that they've expressed here. My main concerns are the issues that we're going to have with water and everything because of the slopes that are in this area. I happen to live on the corner. I mean, the image is not up now, but I happen to live on the corner opposite of where the four homes will be. I'm directly on the corner house at Parkview and Fairview and at this current time, we already currently get water issues in that area without the building going on. As other neighbors of mine have said, this picture does show like beautiful, flat slopes and everything, but if you are familiar with that area, it is not. It is literally hill upon hill. The entire area is hilly. The hill that is on the corner where these homes are going to be building built, they literally are taller than me while I'm standing in the street. Those are how high those hills are. It is a hill. It is the street. It is a slope down into my yard and then the street continues the slope down Fairview. So that whole entire area, the the slope waiver that they're getting is it's just sounds ridiculous to me because it's just going to be a mess when they begin building. Also, one thing that wasn't mentioned, I knew that Shannon had mentioned about her son getting door to door service with the buses. The corner of Parkview and Fairview is also the bus stop for every bus, for all the Abington children that go to school that live in that small cutoff little section because we are surrounded by major roads. We are surrounded by Welsh. We are surrounded by Easton. We are surrounded by Moreland and that little cutout section, all the children that go to school over there walk up to Parkview and Fairview to catch the bus. There is buses there that come there six times a day for every school for this area. It's already traffic issues with this area and I feel like that this is just going to make it worse than what it already is. We have traffic. We have parking issues. None of this building is going to help. We also, I agree that we are going to be losing this beautiful green space. Yes, we understand that building is going to happen. I feel like this is excessive and that the builder and the township and everybody can take responsibility to make it not be this many homes in this area. I think that's pretty much all I have to say. Thank you guys.
Thank you. You too.
Christopher Kendra, 2210 Parkview Avenue. And major issues that I have are safety with the ability of getting fire apparatus, EMS and police down the street. I've witnessed before fire equipment on the street cannot turn around. No one can get past them and creates a back just a log jam on the street. They need to back out of the street. The street's so steep that the truck bottoms out getting out of the street. Also have concerns with the water issues and the basins being under the driveway. These driveways are surely going to collapse. The ground there is too soft and their study has proven that they have a problem with staging equipment. They can't park the equipment on the property because the ground's too soft. It's all fill. Now, these basins are going to collapse. All this water is going to be mismanaged and go downhill down Fairhill. And it's just going to be a complete mess for everyone downhill from there. And you probably all know that Abington put in new sewers at the bottom of Fairview to remediate the flooding they were experiencing at the auto shop down there. It's just going to continue. I've seen water coming up out of the sewers in that area. Also, we're we're going to need some kind of plan for logistics and staging of equipment. They built one additional house on the street next to me and it was a complete nightmare with dumpsters, trailers, bulldozers, materials all being left in the street. We can't get down the street. Where are they going to stage their material? Where are they going to stage their equipment? We need a solid plan of where it's going to happen. They need to maintain that concrete pad that's out there and stage everything there if the ground's too soft to park one in. That's about it.
Okay. Thank you for your comments on your concerns. I think we have one person on Zoom that wants to speak to this. Let me let me get this comment in and then.
Laura Lehman. Laura Lehman, Meadowbrook. I met with these people and I went out to this street. I heard their concerns, but I saw the topography and nobody should be voting on this without going out to look at it. And you heard tonight, for instance, that there are children with special needs on the street and the bus that they need to have get there has problems getting in and out. Fire trucks, it's quite obvious. I had trouble getting in and out the first time. There were cars parked in the driveway, so you couldn't go in the driveway. You had to do a 25 point turn to get down, back down, turned around and and out again. Nobody should be voting on this without seeing this situation. Also, this is a complete violation again of the laws. This was an incomplete application. Somebody decided that the the street was going to get a waiver. That street is a violation of a zoning code. The township's not allowed to just waiver away viola changes in the in the zoning code. That has to go for a variance and the variance would not be able to be granted because it's a hardship that is made by the owner himself. If he didn't have that many houses on that part of the street, he could widen the street to what it needed to be. So he just needs fewer houses. It's a hardship made by him. And I took great exception to Mr. Hassan saying that the county sees no issues. In fact, the county did talk about the steep slope and said that the steep slope laws should be observed and Mr. Hassan has decided there weren't five contiguous lines, so they wouldn't. But then even the waiver for the backfill, the the cut and fill, rather, at 15%, which is greater than it should be, they didn't provide any way to make that equal or better. They did not do that. It is a requirement when you write your application that you put these things in. The waivers and the hardships have to be directly described. And so this is a problematic application and the the fact that the road, even if it was a waiver, would have to be equal or better. Do you want me to wait a minute for you, Mr. Hacker, so you can listen? The fact that the road would have to be equal or better was not even addressed and the road is not equal or better. It is going to become worse, which will affect the health, safety and welfare of the people. And you are not allowed by law to grant waivers that will impact the health, safety and welfare of the people. And this will. And the water actually, they they have said and the county said that the the owners should be carefully told that they have responsibilities for these basins. But individual homeowners don't understand how basins work. They don't know how to get a proper contractor and if it costs a lot of money, they're not going to do it. And if it's under the driveway, it's going to cost a huge amount of money. And so that particular waiver should not be granted. It is completely adverse to the health, safety and welfare of the people in this neighborhood who are already suffering from water. Now, the water's going downhill, okay, but you are going to increase it and they already have a problem. You had to put in extra drains. Now it affects me because that's my township money that you have to put the drains in with. So this is not okay for the owner to have control of that and the water to be ignored as a health, safety and welfare problem. They do not need to put that many houses up that will mediate all of these problems by, okay, they have the right to develop, but they don't need to develop every inch of the property in the tightest conformation ever with no absorption left, steep slopes that will affect everyone. And so please do not approve this. Also, it was incomplete because there was no discussion of the recreational facilities. Six dwelling units means that 13% of the total gross area has to be provided. That wasn't even in the application. So the application has to go back to the applicant.
Okay. Ms. Lehman, thank you for your comments. Your time has expired. Any other comments or questions from members of the board? Commissioner Schreiber.
So I want to both support Commissioner Laney Martin and the neighbors who came out tonight and very clearly expressed their concerns. There's what can happen here legally and which might be, you know, I live right up the street and I looked up the property while we while people were talking and it is a beautiful property currently and there is a lot of green space. It's a nice old house and I'm hoping that the developers are hearing what what the neighbors are saying and that we'll work with them on, you know, the things that they would like to see happen here. I know that there's things that we can do to work together on this. I know this has happened in other areas where developers have come in and yes, they can, you know, do certain things legally, but they also try to work with the neighbors and their needs and their desires and the things that could so not just as far as the waivers even, but maybe as far as other things, the facades that are used on the house is the things that will make it look to to go with the spirit, as I think the commissioner said, the spirit of the community, and I hope that's honored.
Thank you, Commissioner Schreiber. Commissioner Brodsky.
Thanks. President Hacker. Two very brief things. One, I have no problem in jumping in behind the commissioner to my left and supporting her neighbors and her request on this one, so I'm good with that. And then the other thing is I just wanted to pass along a brief comment. At various points in the meeting, there was discussions regarding Manager Manfredi and Chief Malloy and Deputy Chief Porter. And in this, my dealing with all three of those individuals, they've all acted in a professional, prompt, courteous and responsive manner to my residents and the ward and my dealings with them in the township. So I think they're doing what they need to do in terms of how they handle their positions and what they have a response to the community. So fair enough and that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you. Commissioner Brodsky. Commissioner Brown.
Is it appropriate to ask if all the residents are in agreement with their demands of the developer or is that for another time?
Probably another time.
All right.
Commissioner Laney Martin.
The is the engineers.
Cal is on. I don't know.
Are they still here, Allison? Well, when we had our meeting on Wednesday, she explained to me about the question about widening the road and the whole issue of the number, if it would impact the number of homes that can could be developed. And if you can explain to everyone here in reference to the widening of the road, to my understanding was that it would just impact the right of way area and that the it would reduce the green. There will be no trees and things like that, but it wouldn't impact the actual lot sizes. Can you?
I can. I can answer the question.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. If I could, President Hacker?
For sure. Thank you, Cal.
So the question I am fully aware of, the question was whether or not the addition of the right of way in that area would affect the number of of units. The answer is no. The dead zone in district does not have a a maximum density requirements, but I believe if the right of way is to be increased in width, then what happens is that have to meet it have it has to meet the the new sidewalk and curb requirement, which means in this case now you have you have the you have sidewalk and you have green. If you are to increase the width of the road, then you're going to lose that green in front of the property and it's going to be consumed by curb and sidewalk because they are back to back. No green space is required, so you'll see nothing but concrete in that area. And what that what that means is if you are to come in the future or you want to plant any trees because you can't plant them in that sidewalk area, trees would have to be planted outside the the right of way. This is what was discussed and I hope this answers this answers the question. It's not going to affect the the number of the size of the units, rather the green area in the front.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yep. Thank you, Cal.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. So Solicitor Clark, I mean, in listening to this tonight, it seems like certainly further discussion about the waiver request is warranted based on feedback and the fact that our own engineer would like to see additional information about existing lighting coverage before making a recommendation to us about that waiver request.
So the applicant has signed the standard time extension waiver for the township, so we're not under any time pressure right now. So if the board does not want to put this on the November agenda and would rather wait until the December agenda or one down the road unless the applicant exercises its right under the the time limit waiver, you you can do that. You don't have to move it forward to next month. Then we can then arrangements with Mr. Hassan, my office and staff to meet with the applicant to go through some of these issues.
Commissioner Laney Martin, what would your preference be? Yes?
Yes.
Okay. So there's no vote being taken tonight. We appreciate everyone who has come out to express their concerns and we are going to have follow up discussion with the developer, the engineer, the solicitor, and we will make sure through your commissioner that the residents are up to speed and that, you know, we're working diligently to figure out how to address these concerns so that we can do something that works with the character of the community, you know, recognizing again that this is a by right application. So our ability to shape it is limited to things where they're requesting exceptions to our code and that's what we're talking about here. But we hear you. We appreciate you coming out and speaking with a unified voice and we'll continue to work on this so we can get to a point where we can bring this forward. Okay? Yeah, thank you. Ever. Ever. Okay. Just going to give a second for folks to file out of the room. So our third agenda item this evening is to, we're going to consider and discuss an ordinance amending the code of the township of Abington at Part II General Legislation, Chapter 162 zoning by amending and restating Article 21 Use Regulations to revise the definition of indoor recreation. And I guess Solicitor Clark, I'm going to turn this over to you.
Sure. Sure. We, we found a little bit of a hole in our zoning ordinance and we're going to try to plug it right now. Under the definition of recreation indoor, it originally read an indoor facility designed to accommodate sports such as bowling billiards, indoor soccer, ice skating, roller skating, rollerblading, skateboarding and the like. But what we realized, our ordinance doesn't have anything relating to using some of these larger indoor spaces as banquet facilities, catering halls or similar venues. We are seeing this happening in several of our other municipalities where there are these vacant spaces that are now being used, they're being rented out. So we're just trying to tighten up the definition here so we'll have a little bit more control over whether or not somebody tries to use one of those facilities for that purpose.
Thank you, Solicitor. So presently today, we don't have any ability to regulate that and this change would provide that.
We do not have the ability to regulate it.
Okay. Any comments or questions? Commissioner Bowman.
So just to be clear, the last phrase in our ordinance and like activity will be gone or are you going to enunciate?
I apologize, Commissioner Bowman. It'll, we will now add "or for use as an event space, banquet facility, catering hall or similar venue." So, "or the like," we're still going to allow skateboarding, rollerblading, things of that nature, but we're also adding "use for event space, banquet facility, catering hall or similar venue."
Commissioner Brown.
Do any existing facilities need to act on the new ordinance in any way?
If they're, if they are already using it for that purpose, it's going to essentially either be considered a pre-existing non-conforming use or they'll have some sort of vested rights in the way they're using it. This is to prevent this moving forward. We're not, we're not aware of a lot of this, this type of use in the township, but we just wanted to make sure that it, we don't get a whole lot of them.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Commissioner Henry.
So the intent of this is not to restrict these things from happening, it's just to have control for when it does happen. Is that correct?
Correct.
Because we don't need any fewer teen venues available in our township right now.
We just, we just want to make sure that they're, they're properly regulated and that we know what's happening there. Because as you can imagine, it's a large open space that suddenly is a catering hall and it's close to a neighborhood and, you know, they're playing 80s dance music till 10:30, 11 o'clock at night. It may upset the neighbors, so we're trying to, we're trying to regulate it.
Okay. So this, well, we're going to advertise this?
Correct.
Okay. So the, the agenda item in November will be a motion to advertise this change and then we'll vote on it in December.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you, Solicitor. And our final agenda item this evening is an update from the Environmental Advisory Commission Counsel. Sorry, I always get that wrong. Because the shade tree is a commission, you're a council and I can't keep track.
Sorry. We're ready. Do I need you to speak? Sorry. There we go. Okay. All right, good. Awesome. Good start.
Hi, I'm Karen McGarry Rosen. I'm from, I'm the Chair of the Environmental Advisory Council and with me is?
I'm Andrea Sue. I am the EAC Secretary. We've both been longtime appointed members, going on 10-plus years or so.
Yeah, almost.
So let me just start off with why we're here today. We are basically here as a follow-up to our first meeting. We attended the working session in February, so we just wanted to give you an update on what we've been doing since that time. But as a kind of intro, we just want to, oh, great. Thank you. Here, I'll walk out, just talk over here. So we are here to raise awareness about single-use plastic pollution and tell you what we've done about it. And Karen will give you a nice update about some of the requests that you made in the February meeting about doing additional research and engaging with the local businesses. She'll give you a little bit more information about that. So these are a couple of slides from the first presentation in February. I won't get too into it. We have this presentation will be available. We will be posting it on the township website in a couple of days. So if you want to look at some of the research that we've done as well as links to the actual research and reports and articles, they are included as links in the PowerPoint presentation. So we chose this initiative among many other things that we work on because this is something that we've, we have some concern about and what we're proposing is to basically restrict some of the single-use plastics that we use in our community. And this is something that we feel is, is an achievable effort. So, single-use plastics and water bottles and those types of plastics are basically not, they're, they can impact our infrastructure and we have some studies that show that plastics are found in, in the form of microplastics in a lot of our waterways in the state. And here's some additional studies. The links are in this PowerPoint. We basically recycle no more than 5% of our plastics and the vast majority of which goes to landfills or is incinerated. And of course, incineration causes other, other health effects, including endocrine and reproductive impacts. So this is, in a nutshell, what we are proposing. We did actually revise the ordinance in terms of refining some of the definitions for plastics as well as for the expanded polystyrene definition to be more precise. And basically we had some footnotes which we put more into the content of the actual language of the ordinance. But overall, the, the overall content has, has not changed. You'll see in, kind of in the smaller font, we did better define what the compliant paper bags will be. And this is based on studies from the, the main authority for paper bags, which is the Forest Stewardship Council. So you'll see that definition within the ordinance, which you may have a copy of at this time.
So one thing that we did add that we talked about at the February meeting is exempting prescription drug bags, so that's listed at the bottom. So I, if you don't remember, for those of you that were at the February meeting, we had made contact with a couple of businesses before that meeting and prescription drugs I mentioned was not listed as an exemption for the fee that we're proposing in the draft ordinance. So we wanted to exclude that so that it's the customer's not charged a fee for that bag.
This is just an updated map from the last time that we presented. There's been some changes. There are now 12 instead of 10 states that have an outright ban on plastics, single-use plastics. And then there's some additional restrictions for the purple states. And then we do have two states that did initially have bans in certain cities and jurisdictions, but it was overturned by the states. Here's a regional map that we developed, which is just collating all the information for southeast Pennsylvania. There's since been additional ordinances that have passed, some with fees, some without. The dark green, there are about 33 now in the southeast PA region. We do have other, there's other municipalities in central and western PA, which we did not include, but those are also on the larger map. And the lighter green, of course, are those that are either in discussion or proposing or in, in progress, doing research to see if they would be also having an ordinance. So I guess Karen?
Does anybody have any questions?
Yes. Um, name by?
I did. Yes, I did.
Um, I have a question. I didn't see on that list of things that were exempt. You said something about unwrapping food? So in a particular wrapping sandwich, so the Nelly, the paper to wrap or sandwich, that would be something that would be exempt or?
Exempt from?
The fee.
Doesn't need to be, doesn't need to be exempt.
Correct. Because it's not a bag.
So it was only bags?
Correct. That's right.
Oh, I am so sorry.
I forgot about this thing here. Okay, for the recording, everyone. I was asking about wrapping food and it just hit me, you were saying it's just bags, not wrapping food.
Correct. That's right.
Okay. All right, well, also, my other question is the whole issue of adopting, I don't know, you're, you're going to go through your notes of who you talked to before?
Yeah.
Okay, I, I'll wait then.
Yeah. I just, we just wanted to pause because we're changing presenters, so if anybody had any questions.
Okay. Sorry. I just jumped in there because I have a bunch of.
Andrea had to say. Did you? Go ahead.
Why do we care if the bag has printed on it that it's recycled?
Yeah. This was something that came down from Penn Environment in their draft ordinance. So my, I would imagine that the reason why is so that the township doesn't get any complaints when they don't see and they don't know that it says 40% post-consumer recyclable because then they wouldn't be providing a compliant bag. So if it doesn't say it, we don't know that it's happening.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Bowman.
Hi. Thanks, President Hecker. The general concept that microplastics are everywhere and we're inhaling them in our bodies and are harmful, I get. I so want to get behind this. But the initial presentation from Penn Environment that brought this to us had major holes in it and major problems and, and I easily doing some Googling found some counter arguments to why single-use plastics, plastic bags are, there's an argument for not banning them. And I'm not, I'm just speaking personally, I'm not compelled by the, all the cool kids are doing it argument and showing a map of all the other places that have done it. I, I would love to strengthen our argument by actually hunting for information about how local businesses have felt that they've been harmed by the passing of these ordinances in other municipalities. And if we find that those arguments are not compelling, I would be more likely to support this. I don't understand how we can put up a picture of 5,000 plastic bags clogging a drain and not ask the question? Have we talked with our own wastewater team about whether plastic bags are consistently and regularly found in our storm drains? Is that a problem here?
So it isn't?
I understand conceptually that it is a problem and could be a problem. Do we know that it is a problem in Abington and is our wastewater team concerned about that? So that, sorry, I'll get all of my questions out quickly. That, that's one of my questions. Have we talked locally instead of putting up these, you know, high emotionally charged images of thousands of plastic bags clogging a wastewater drain? Is that a problem here? Number two, how, I, maybe I don't understand the mechanics of it, but how can we dictate what the fee that local businesses have to charge for a paper bag is? What if local businesses don't want to charge customers' fees? They want to absorb the charge because they don't feel like passing on the cost to the customer? Can, can local businesses do that? I also don't understand the idea of enforcement around mandating that businesses provide bags that offer no old growth fiber or a minimum of 40% post-consumer recyclable material. How, how's that enforced? And who's going to enforce that? That doesn't make much sense to me. And last, my concern was, have we done some research on what the harmful effects to plas, single-use plastic bags are specifically in Abington, not just generally as a concept? Thank you. And we can talk about those ongoing. It's, it's, we don't have to go through all of those questions now. And I ask them honestly in good faith. I understand that single-use plastics are not great and are very harmful, but I just have not heard the localized compelling argument for passing this ordinance that would cause me to say, yeah, we have to do this here in Abington.
So Mike Jones came to our EAC meeting, not this month, but last month, and talked about the truck wash. And, you know, I did ask him, is there a plastic bag issue within the drains in the, in Abington? He said that there, they don't see a lot of plastic bags in their drains, that most that they see are the plastic bottles. So as far as the plastic bags in the drains, that's not an Abington problem. I guess the problem is when people put plastic bags in their recycling and then the recycling is picked up, right? And the can, the truck comes and just dumps whatever's in the can. If the plastic bag is in there because, say, the resident wants the plastic bag to be recycled, thinking that if it's going to go in through the same stream, it's going to be recycled, that's not happening. So that, that plastic bag gets dumped at the recycling plant and gets stuck in the machinery, which they have to stop the assembly line to pull the bags out, which we had heard from Cheltenham Township, that that happens frequently, multiple times a day for them to stop and pull the bags out of the recycling. So, microplastics are in the TTF, the Tacony, I always forget which T is first, Tacony.
Tacony, Tacony, Frankfurt.
Thank you. It is in the TTF watershed, so it is in Abington, the microplastics. What was the other? The 15th? The post?
Fee.
The, well, it was the, right, it was the fee. So, you know, we're going to talk about the fee, I'm going to get to that later, but, and then the other, the last thing was about the old growth. Again, this was just the recommendation from Penn Environment and I understand, you know, your views on the Farron who came from Penn Environment and spoke in November. But that was just lifted from their draft ordinance based on, we don't want to create another problem by eliminating the plastic bags, so.
Thank, thank you for all the work that you're doing on this. I, I appreciate that very much. I think we've made a lot of progress in localizing the, the questions and I appreciate your answers very much. Thank you.
Sure. Anybody else?
Yes.
If you could back up a little bit for me because I'm, I'm not, I zoomed in on the February meeting, but it's out of my head. So, microplastics are in?
Waterways. The TTF.
Just make the connection. The microplastics that are in the waterways is, are, the source of those microplastics is probably a lot of things, but these plastic bags is, is a source of the microplastics. Is that correct?
Right. Because they, they don't break down, right? So it takes 1,000 years for a plastic bag to break down. So when it does break down, it breaks down into smaller pieces of plastic. And then the fish eat them and they, they've been testing, you know, that we have streamkeepers in all of the areas of Abington that test the water and they're, they're, they have found that the microplastics are in Abington specifically.
And you're saying that the plastic bags to possibly be banned are a significant source of those microplastic materials in our water? Is that correct?
So I can tell you that if you've ever done a cleanup in Abington, there's, all you see, and particularly in certain parks, is trash, is plastic bags. You know, they, they collect, you know, they take their. a, another problem by eliminating the plastic bags. So.
Thank, thank you for all the work that you're doing on this. I, I appreciate that very much. I think we've made a lot of progress in localizing the, the questions, and I appreciate your answers very much. Thank you.
Sure. Anybody else?
Yes.
If you could back up a little bit for me, because I'm, I'm not, I zoomed in on the February meeting, but it's on my head. So, microplastics are in?
Waterways and TTF.
Just make the connection, the microplastics that are in the waterways is, are, the source of those microplastics is probably a lot of things, but these plastic bags is, is a source of the microplastics?
Right.
Is that correct?
Because they, they don't break down, right? So it takes a thousand years for a plastic bag to break down. So when it does break down, it breaks down into smaller pieces of plastic. And then the fish eat them and they, they've been testing, you know, that we have streamkeepers in all of the areas of Abington that test the water and they're, they're, they have found that the microplastics are in Abington specifically.
And you're saying that the plastic bags to possibly be banned are a significant source of those microplastic materials in our water? Is that correct?
So I can tell you that if you've ever done a cleanup in Abington, there's, all you see, and particularly in certain parks, is trash, is plastic bags. You know, they, they collect, you know, they take their dog for the walk, sorry, nothing against dogs. They take their dog for a walk, they collect the, the, the poop in the plastic bag, and then they toss it into the park. Because they don't want to take it home, there's no trash cans at the park for them to deposit it. And when they did have trash cans at certain parks, you know, the local riffraff were burning them, putting them on fire. So then they took the trash cans away. And they don't want to carry it home, so they chuck it into the waterways. And unless there's routine cleanups over and over and over again, that plastic bag would break down over time and go into the waterway.
And they do contribute. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, President Hecker. So, full disclosure, as folks know, I was in favor of this years ago. I'm more in favor now. You, you know, you know how I admire the work you've done. I'm about to make, there are going to be some obvious references to Commissioner Bowles' comment, and I do not want anyone to think that I am in any way deriding his comment. Commissioner Bowles is one of, for real, one of the most thoughtful, conscientious people, and he does his research and his homework. I, I too have looked up the counter arguments, because that's, that's part of doing the homework. In, in my research, and certainly not comprehensive, but when I, when I did further digging into the counter arguments, overwhelmingly, in fact, probably 100% of the time, I found that they were, that those counter arguments were presented, that it was, it was research or not even necessarily research, just, you know, opinion pieces that were funded by industries that would, very much would not like to see plastic bag, single-use plastic, plastic bags and straws and polystyrene banned. Now, I don't, I don't know, you know, it, there could be, there could be more legitimate sources, but I, that, that was very suspicious to me. I do, you know, I appreciate, again, I appreciate Mr., Commissioner Bowles' emphasis on, on, on local, local effects and local, local impact. I will say that, for me, it is actually a compelling argument that all the cool kids are doing it. I mean, that, that, that map, that map does speak to me. It's significant. And you'll, you'll find that where these, where these bans are being adopted are areas like ours, and, and like the city of Philadelphia, and like our entire area, the most densely populated parts of our Commonwealth. And, you know, we're the ones most likely to be sending the greatest amount of plastic into our waterways. And with regard to the, with regard to the local impact, I've had a lot of conversations with Director Jones about the, the whole issue of plastic bags in our recycling, but the fact is, the, our waterways, the, our watersheds, the TTF, the Wissahican, the Penny Pack, they all have these microplastics. And the microplastics in our waterways are, microplastics are, in our waterways are where microplastics are the biggest problem and do the most damage. And that is the most direct pipeline into our bodies. So, I mean, having seen in various places in this country and the world, having just, you know, been on, being on vacation and having come upon these gigantic plastic masses washed up, like, you know, washed up on the shore or washed, like, you know, being on a, you know, being on a cliff overlooking, overlooking the, the shore and seeing these just, these, these monstrous blobs of plastic, many definable items in there, you know, plastic, plastic bottles, jugs from detergent, whatnot, but all of the amorphous stuff, all of the stuff that was, that was clearly liquefying and mixing with the, mixing with the seafoam, that was all obviously plastic bags. So, that's, that's my take. Thank you for your time. Thank you.
I just want to say that, you know, these two states in red that have reversed plastic bag bans, you know, Texas is one of the highest producers of plastic, so it's not surprising that, you know, that they would reverse that production or the prevention of creating any plastic bag bans in that state. So I just wanted to point that out.
All right. I'm going to let you finish.
Okay. Okay. So what have we done? So we went to the NWACP Will Grove Local Chapter in February, we mentioned that in our last time here. We got their letter of support, which we forwarded to the Board of Commissioners. We also went to the Glen Side Business Association in June of 2024. We provided them a memo and a link to our business survey. In addition to that, we provided a memo to the Will Grove Mall, and they forwarded it all to the businesses as well. We revised the memo and the draft ordinance, as Andrea mentioned already. We sent that to the board on, in June of 2024. We received business feedback, which we are going to get to, either via survey or door-to-door visits. We got a second letter of support from Curds &amp; Way, which is a business in Ward Seven. They do all food items. And a third letter of support from Heirloom Pottery Studio in Ward Twelve, which they sell pottery and, you know, gifts, let's say that. We also received feedback from surrounding townships post-implementation. We also have someone, I think, on the line that is from another township, who will be able to speak to their, their, uh, plastic bag ban after implementation. And we have local businesses who donated bags. We have purchased bags as well since we have been here in February. We were at the Fall Fest on Saturday, and we were giving the bags out to anyone who needed them. So, all right. So this is the updated timeline. That was one of the comments from one of the Ward Commissioners the last time we were here. I don't remember which one, sorry, but, so now that we've, you know, we're at the tail end of 2024, it would be great if this would be enacted in 2025 with a, you know, a six-month turnaround time for the businesses to go through their plastic bag volume, as well as getting, you know, paper bags if they need to request an exemption. The exemption process is in the draft ordinance. And the, going by what the surrounding townships have implemented to get it in place before the holidays, not right before the holiday season, but have it in place before the holidays. So I'm going to leave this slide up so you can see how many businesses that we receive feedback. Again, we focused on small businesses, not the big, big box stores. Some of the big box stores in Will Grove did fill out the survey, so we included that information. There is another slide for the higher number wards, just so you don't think that we just did one, three through 10. So I can advance the screen, I just have the asterisk next to Curds &amp; Way because they're, you know, they're, they send a letter of support. And I'll go to the next slide. So this is 11 through 12, and you see 12 has, you know, a large majority because, you know, we went to the, the Business Association. And so not only did we hear from them specifically at the meeting, they all, some of them, when they sent the memo out, they filled out the survey. So it's a total of 70. You see that at the, on the side here. You see also the asterisk for Heirloom, because they sent a letter of support. The, they were either visited in person or they filled out the survey, and two businesses since that were, are no longer in business. They're not on this list, and their comments were not included in the next several slides that you'll see. Everybody, everybody see their wards on here? Okay. So, the businesses that use plastic bags, of the ones that were surveyed or we went door-to-door, 51 businesses, it's not 51%, it's 51 businesses still use plastic bags. 17 businesses do not use plastic bags. Okay? This is specifically just plastic bags. So the next slide, this is the number of businesses that use plastic bags in addition to other options, so 49%. So you see 49, 20, and 32, because the plastic bags, styrofoam and straws impacts multiple businesses, they may have a tick in each one of these. Lastly, we have the results of how would you support an ordinance from limiting single-use plastics? And 72% said yes, they would support it. 20%, 22% were ambivalent, you know, "We're not fighting City Hall" was a comment frequently, and 20% said that they would not support a ban. So we have some comments from some of the businesses. As I said, we know what's coming, we will adapt, I mentioned that in February. The biggest, I can say, there was a lot of businesses that I personally went to, I know Andrea went to businesses as well, and I would say that the biggest problem was not with the plastic bag conversion, the biggest problem was with the businesses that use styrofoam and finding an alternative. And you see at the bottom, it says, "No problem with the fee, concerned about alternatives with the wings," and haven't found a suitable one. So one particular business has a lot of styrofoam in their products and no plastic bags at So, uh, what else? There was some, a lot of lively discussion.
Sure.
With the owners and the managers that we spoke with. So in regards to the fee, just to, you know, be transparent, if you happen to read the letter of support from Heirloom, they have already, they don't give out plastic bags, they give out paper bags. They have preferred that the fee be optional, because they feel that they've already absorbed the cost of the paper bags, and other businesses said the same thing, who have already absorbed the paper bags. So they feel like that they don't want to have to charge the customer. The, some of them felt that if they're already giving paper bags, that they, it shouldn't even be optional. So even when I said, well, what if it was mandatory and, you know, the businesses that now have to absorb the cost of increasing from, you know, a penny a bag to eight cents a paper for a paper bag? And a lot of them were pretty adamant that they did not, they felt that the business should be supplying the bag at their own cost. So, another one, you know, a couple of them have, the local businesses, they have a, a second site, second location. One of them was in Philly, I think I have that comment up here, another location in Philly, and they already switched to paper. And then the second to the last bullet, they have a location in New Jersey and they don't use plastic or paper. So. So feedback from the surrounding townships after implementation. So I know this is a lot of text, and again, you know, this is from Cheltenham Township. They're, they're saying that it was going well. There aren't any plastic bags in all the big box stores, and their EAC travels around the township. They saw that there was one complaint, which they followed up on, that, one of the things that they said about the seniors, you know, that they were dropping off bags to the seniors at the local church. So that's something that we can learn from. In addition, I had shared with Andrea that we could go to the apartment complexes or reach out to the senior centers that have independent living, such as Riddle Park, to see if they have, if they need bags and, and donate those as well to anyone who needs Let's see. They noticed that the Public Works Department has much less plastic bag litter in their We have Montgomery Township, they haven't received any feedback that they weren't expecting. There were complaints about the ban, that they won't shop in the township anymore, but that their sampling of people appears to be small, and it went into effect April 22nd. And, you know, they, if they were going to do something differently, they would give the restaurants a completely different poster than the retail locations. That version, we'll go into detail about the nuances of takeout, et cetera. So that was feedback. And one more is from Springfield Township. They haven't had any problems, you know, a few online grumblings on neighborhood websites such as Nextdoor and Springfield Facebook pages. They had, you know, the person that I reached out to had went into Acme, Acme and Flower Town, and, you know, he, they, he thought he would hear complaints, and, you know, people were coming out before the ban was in place, 10 to 12 plastic bags, but everyone was coming out with two brightly covered reusable bags. So we do, Lynette from Upper Moreland said that she was going to be online, is she listed as?
Lynette, you're unneeded.
So Lynette is from Upper Moreland Township, and she's, can speak to?
Can you hear me?
Can you hear us, Lynette?
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
So I am from Upper Moreland Township, and we, our ban went into effect on January 1st. There was one store that asked if they could not charge because there were stores across the street that were in a different township and had not yet passed a ban. And so, you know, it was granted that that store didn't have to charge. There's really been no enforcement problems. I think, what else? There was one store, when it was first went into effect, that hadn't used up their plastic bags yet, so they asked for like a two-week extension, not an issue, you know, that was granted, and once they'd used up their plastic bags, they were fine. As it was stated, so many of the larger chains, this is happening all over, and so a lot of them are just going ahead and doing it, whether the township has passed an ordinance or not, just no big deal to them. I think most everyone sees the handwriting on the wall, so to speak, and so more and more places are just implementing it anyway. Some places have a take a bag, leave a bag, so reusable bags that can be left if you have extras. Like, I seem to get free bags from different groups, and so I can donate some and still have plenty left for myself. Just haven't really been any issues.
Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions for Lynette? Just being curious of her time.
Yeah, yeah, no, appreciate it. I think we're good.
Thank you, Lynette.
Yes, thank you, Lynette.
Is that it?
That's it.
Okay. Are there, yeah, Commissioner Bowman?
I was prepared to accept this in a macro way with no further information, but I appreciate all the hard work you've done to give us micro details here in Abington. And we have some citizens who are concerned about trash and blight, and I'm sure this will make them happy, too.
Yes, thank you.
Other comments or questions for members of the board? Commissioner Laney Martin?
Hi. Yes, you came and visit me?
I did.
At the Village Deli. And I guess what I would say as a, you know, business owner, that this would directly impact, it seems that the customer is preparing for it. I noticed that some people come in and they're still a little surprised, I still use plastic bags. And they went, "Oh, you use plastic? Oh, my goodness." Okay, yeah, Abington didn't do it yet. This is pretty exciting. No, I don't need a bag. I, I have a bag, or I have a bag in a car, or things like that. Yeah. Um, that's happening. You will be happy to know that I started using my styrofoam less, you know.
Makes my heart happy.
Yes, I use less of that. I'm using the rest of what we have, and then we're going to, I'm using the compostable, whatever. But I think what would be helpful when this happens is that you have a guide for businesses to really outline what are the exact products that are good to use? Because I had to go out and look around. I was like, okay, I went to the store, to the, you know, the supply house, and I was like, okay, I don't want styrofoam, but what would be good for these types of products? products? You know, I do club sandwiches, I do french fries, I do things like that. And so, what would be something so that may help that person who does fried wings all the time?
Yeah.
Like, this is a good product that, that will have your food. Because in this kind of industry, it's all about presentation of your food
Of course.
When you get it back.
Yes.
And so, if you, it looks a sloppy mess, or it looks horrible, or is the container is yucky, the food may be great
Yeah.
But no one wants to eat it because their first impression, something's wrong with it, it's not good.
Right. Because it doesn't look good.
Because it doesn't look good. So, I think that would be helpful in this. Also, in addition, I, I think, can't speak for all business owners, but from my experience, a lot of the customers are driving this for businesses. I've had comments on Grubhub, DoorDash, things like that, because they ask them, like, "What was your experience? Were they reusable? Did you think they were environmentally?"
Oh, wow.
Was your, you know, product that you got in your delivery, was it something that you would think is, you know, being aware of environmental things? And they would say no, or whatever.
Wow.
And I had got some comments on that, like, "Oh, great food, but, you know, need to work on packaging," that kind of thing, right? And so, it's being driven, yes.
Yeah.
It's being driven. And so, I know there's a concern about the impact of businesses. And I wholeheartedly appreciate that as a business owner here in Abington. But I think the customer is, is driving it themselves and helping this transition. So, I don't think it's going to be as bad as some people may think, especially if you get that information to people, you know, before you even like go back to that person who does the wings and say, "Hey, these are all the great products that you can use to package your food. Give them a try," and things like that.
Right.
And even if you wanted to get even more in-depth in it for helping adoption, even get free samples from the vendors.
Sure.
I mean, they will send that stuff to you, and you can send it to them and connect it. Because the ultimate goal is that we want our customer to get great food.
Right. And come back.
And come back. So, I'm just saying, I think that will be helpful. And then I had a question about straws, so.
Yeah. So, it's not eliminating the straws. It's only that if the customer asks for a straw, that you give it to them. So, anybody who's gone out to dinner, and, you know, if you have a four-top table or a two-top table, and they put, the server puts two drinks down and plops two straws on the table, that needs to stop. A lot of, a lot of businesses have stopped that already.
Okay.
So, you know, it's only if the customer asks. So, it's not eliminating plastic straws at all. It's just upon request.
Okay.
All right, well, thank you for your time.
Karen, can I just ask a really quick question
Yes.
About what you were saying. Somebody's in a restaurant, and they get, they can't finish their food
Mm-hmm.
And it gets put into something? Is there a charge for that?
There's no charge for that, no.
Okay.
If they put it in a bag, if they put the food in a bag.
What else, what are they going to put it in?
Well, no, well, they're not putting the food in a bag, right? They're putting the food in a container, a food container. If they put the food container in the bag.
I mean, people aren't going to bring their cloth bags into a restaurant, probably. So.
Right.
How are they going to take their food home?
So, so, I mean, we're talking about a doggy bag, right?
Doggy bag, yeah.
So, so, the food is going to be in a container. They can just carry the container, I mean, unless they're
Oh, sure.
That's what I'm saying, right?
But the container, and the container's not going to be Styrofoam, or
Correct.
But it could be plastic.
It could be plastic.
Just really quick.
Because that, that plastic container is recyclable, technically.
Yeah, yeah.
Right.
Just really quick, one suggestion.
Yes.
Communication's going to be really key in regards to this. One way to involve the community is to solicit the schools to maybe do a contest in regards to creative, to help promote it. That way, it's promoted within the school
Yeah.
ecosystem, as well as the greater community.
Thank you. So, when we were at the Fall Fest on Saturday, you know, when we were giving out the bags, you know, I was asking the people that came up to the table, "Do you live in Abington?" And probably about 50% lived in Abington, and 50% didn't live in Abington. And I, and I shared with them, you know, "We're trying to get a plastic bag ban. You can have a, you know, bag if you want." Some said, you know, "I have enough bags," which we saw in our survey, you know, 92% already have bags. I know Commissioner Zepone, who's not here right now, didn't have any bags, and he had to go out and get some, which, but the, you know, the ones who have, who lived outside of Abington, who live in a township that has a ban, you know, the, most of them, none of them complained, first of all, and said, you know, "I'm, I'm so glad Abington doesn't have a plastic bag ban." Not one person said that. What they did say is, "It's really not that big of a deal. Everybody adjusts." And I just wanted to share that.
Thank you. I appreciate all the additional work that you've done. So, if we were to move forward with your general timeline, we don't have a meeting on January 1st. It would be whatever
Yeah.
the date is, which would mean Solicitor Clark, we would have to advertise this in December to, if we're going to meet their desire, if we were to agree to meet their desire to pass this in January, we would have to advertise
You can pass it before.
We, we'll take that under advisement, and we'll get back to it.
Although, I, just to be clear, I think the ordinance contains a period of time before it goes into effect. It doesn't
No, no, for sure.
Correct.
Yeah, they want it passed in January.
So, we would have to advertise it in, at the December meeting for our January meeting date, which I
Whatever, it's the second Thursday.
I think it's the 9th?
Something like that, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, great. Well, we thank you for coming in tonight and sharing all the detailed work that you've been up to.
Sure. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right. We will take any public comment on agenda items. Not the, not the second land development application, because we went through that.
First of all, where's the 15 cents go? When they're collecting 15 cents a bag? Who's getting it?
Goes to
The, the business.
The business, gotcha.
They keep the 15 cents?
Yeah.
Well, of course, this is for the businesses, and you're asking them if they like it or not. And the smaller businesses are really stuck because they do want to please the customer, because it's hard for small businesses to do business nowadays. But this is a big win for the large ones like Target. That's what it's for. They save money. It should be going into community services here, because we have a problem with pollution. I don't like that they're keeping our money. That's ridiculous. First of all, our main problem is, and as you know, I've never seen you thank me for my service. I go all around, and I take a lot of photos. And it's very easy to see what's lining up in the gutters all the time is bottles, plastic bottles from convenience stores, Wawa cups, I told you, are floating in the creek, Dunkin' Donuts, big things, the 7-Eleven, big gulps, these big plastic cups you find, and they've discarded bottles. And you don't clean the streets enough. That's a big deal. You don't clean them, that's why it builds up, because you don't clean them in weeks, months, and years. Now, with, with the parks, well, Wawa, there should be a tax, some kind of fine given to Wawa, because the garbage is everywhere, and they don't even clean their driveway. It has to be, we have a rat problem, and you're not even making sure that the driveway is washed. It has to be washed down sometimes.
Do you have comments on the agenda items this evening?
Yeah. This is what it's about. I'm finding the plastic in the gutters, and what I find is not the bags. It's the convenience store stuff. They're all over. Wawa especially is all over. And then what happens is, there's not enough people in street department, as you know. So, then they mow the lawn, and they break the plastic up into pieces, and it's all over by the dog park. And then those are the microbes that go into the creek. There's so much pieces, and they're all from plastic cups, from the Dunkin' Donuts, particularly the Wawa, because it's nearby now, the 7-Eleven. And that's mainly what they get. And then sometimes you might see the glass bottles type of thing, but it's drinking things that are really littering the area. And this is about helping rich people get richer, billionaires. Of course it is. Target's going to save billions by not giving bags. Home Depot will save billions. But it does harm the little stores that are relying on local clientele, who like the idea of getting a couple cupcakes in their bag. And then they don't really want it. The local businesses are like 70 this way, 40 this way. They're not asking for it. And people prefer to be able to decide, "Oh, I forgot my bags at home? Sure. I'll, I'll take a bag this week, but next week I'll bring mine." Of course they do. And then I go in the stores, and I reuse those bags instead. It's like, I have to buy bags. You created a business. If I have to buy plastic bags for my dogs, I have to buy plastic bags for my art projects. The library who gives you plastic bags when it rains has to buy the bags now. And they were using like just bags that people brought in from the Acme. You're making money for big businesses here. And you're constantly working on the big businesses. Meanwhile, the street department really needs somebody who can pick up the trash before it's mowed down into tiny particles, which are all over there. And the Wawa really needs to wash their streets, and we really need those closed dumpsters that you're against. We have open dumpsters. Right near Ms. Young, Ms. Burks Young, there's an open Target dumpster. It's been open for months. It's broken. Nobody's making sure that's closed. And I told you, you had the other AutoZone move in, huge dumpsters there. This is the problem with our environment. And then the, it's horrible. And the bugs come, and the garbage builds up, and it looks worse all the time. And the plastic that we're finding all over in the, in the streets, and I look, and I have lots of pictures, it is always drinking containers. And you're bringing in too many of these convenience stores, and they should pay extra tax for being here. You want to put a Taco Bell, they should pay extra tax, because their trash ends up in the street. The Wawa should be paying fines up the yahoo for the garbage they're putting out there on Eastern Road. I mean, Dunkin' Donuts, you see their bottles, they're all over the gutters. You should do something about that. You don't care. And then they're mowing over the
Okay.
Pieces.
Ms. Kabel, your time has expired.
They need more street people. Ignore that, just keep helping the Target.
Yeah. Does anybody else wish to comment before we adjourn?
It's a long night. Joe Rooney, first off, Mr. Bowman making a joke about a woman getting beat up in a laundry for cheap points
Mr. Rooney, if you have
It's really low class.
If you have, no, no.
So.
Mr. Rooney, if you have comments about what was on the agenda, you may make them. Otherwise, you can sit down.
I do.
Then make them now.
Second one is, if you're going to insult people in the audience, you should do it upfront, not before the end of their comments.
So, Mr. Rooney, once again, that is not an agenda item. So, if you have comments about the agenda, I suggest
Those are points that needed to be made.
Not here.
So, the February presentation, even Mr. Bowles agrees, had large holes in it. It was mostly fraudulent. But it doesn't seem to bother any of you or the EAC presentation, because that's irrelevant, because this is mostly an exercise in emotion and political power. So, what I would ask, and I'm not talking to you all, because you're not going to listen, but if anybody's out there, what's the goal of this ban? Is the goal to reduce microplastics? Then a logical question is, where's the, where's the connection? This commissioner said roughly, where's the connection between plastic bags and microplastics? And since it's been achieved in all these other surrounding communities, where's the evidence that there's been a reduce, a reduction in that from the measurements or the stream-side analysis, or whatever it is? There isn't any. This has nothing to do with science. It really has nothing to do with environment either. It's just political power. Is the goal to just reduce litter? Well, once again, I'm going to tell you, we can look in Philadelphia and go, "Tell me where that plastic bag has reduced the litter." Okay? We can look at any of the highways, go down through Blue Route, or whatever you want to call it right now, and look at the litter down there. Doesn't look like it's reduced it to me. It's just a raw exercise of political power. And I know it makes the commissioners feel good, because you're going to turn Abington one color on that little map. It has nothing to do with achieving anything. This is the same group that approved 150 row homes on St. Basil's property, and then you're going to preach to us all night about how environmentally concerned you are. Okay? Spare us. We get out of the meetings earlier. The other thing, yeah, plastic bag ban, and then we're also going to get into price controls. Now, we're going to tell individual business owners who know their customers and know their product, how much they have to charge for something, what they have to use, whether they like it or not. And there are concerns about, what's the presentation? And no one ever raises a concern about, how about what the consumers, how about the inconvenience? What's that up for any individual? Because people with kids have a lot of problems. People who have low income have to absorb the costs, because businesses don't absorb costs, they pass them on to consumers. But you all know that. So, it is low-income people, minority people, elderly people who unreasonably bear these costs, so you all can feel good. The last part I'll say is, if the presentation was so compelling, and we assume that people in Abington are smart, you could convince them to voluntarily do this. You could. People can do it. And all of a sudden, there'd be a groundswell from the bottom up. It's not these wise lawyers or everything doing the old top-down, "Look at us, man. We're for the environment." But you don't have a strong enough case. "Oh, and I'm one. I'm really glad there's no ban here." I don't care about plastic bags. I care about government
Mr. Rooney.
That's what I do. So, there's one right there. You're good with that gavel. You're a powerful man.
You know, Mr. Rooney, it's time for you to conclude your comments. You're veering off track. And you're not to speak to people in the audience.
I'm not.
You're to speak
Thanks, thank you. So, the people will do, if you, they will achieve the goals that you set, if you have goals. They will agree with you if you have a compelling argument. But you have neither. There's no goals, and there's no compelling argument. So, you're going to do this because you want to. It's not done to help the environment. It's not done to help people. It's not done to help businesses. So, it's just political power.
All right. Is there anyone on Zoom who wishes to speak?
Yes. Oh, online, I'm sorry.
Renee, you're unmuted. Renee, you have to unmeet yourself.
All right. Move on to the next person.
Laura Lehman.
Laura Lehman, Meadowbrook. And I just want to commend Karen and Andrea for an amazing job. I had no idea the extent which they've gone, and this is just amazing. And I think, so, first of all, you should be extremely proud of them, and I think you already are, because they do a lot of good work. But this is really an important issue. And there are people volunteering. I think we just heard from your own commissioner, even, that there are people that are volunteering to bring their own bags. We all are doing, and I keep my bags in the car, and then I get to the checkout, and I go, "Darn, the bags are in the car." But now, I'm making myself run to the car and get them. So, when I do that, I, that inspires me to think harder before I get out of the car. So, there are people voluntarily doing this now. They just can't be enough of a movement, as long as money is a factor. And so, this is an important thing for you to do, I think, and I hope that most of you know that. And I hope that, you know, we will, I actually thank Mr. Spiegelman, Commissioner Spiegelman, for bringing forth the fact that the counter-arguments are coming from, you know, a specious place, that we need to give them far less attention. And so, please move this small step forward, and please keep on moving forward with this item. And I, again, I would just make a plea for respect in the speaking rules, that when somebody counters a resident who's speaking, the appropriate speaking rules are to give that resident appropriate time to answer that counter. And all of it should be done respectfully, but it can't be done respectfully with the disrespect that's being shown from the podium. Okay? Okay? So please, respectfully, I ask you to pass this, to keep moving on the plastics issue, and to move from this horrible place that we are in speaking rights. Thank you.
Okay. And we're gonna try one last time, Renee.
Renee, you're unmuted.
Yeah, hello.
Hi. I am, I am extremely excited about this, about this ban on the plastic ban ordinance, and I don't know what has taken so long. Just frustrating to me, and I just don't see how we're surrounded by communities that are using and utilizing and implementing plastic bags that are everywhere. I'd love to see that we implement it, and that's healthy, and just get it out of our systems. And it's, it's a, it's a beginning, it's the beginning of, people mention, "Oh, I see water, I see water bottles on the ground," and plastic bags, I mean, styrofoam in the, in the creeks, and there's a lot of source of plastic bags. Obviously, we're just focusing on the bags, and they, we don't need them anymore, and if anything, people need to change their ways of, of behaving. And, you know, I, I bring plastic bags to the local businesses, and I use them, and when, it's, it just drives me crazy when I see people walk out with a bag and one, like, watermelon in it, or, that's pretty heavy. But it's just infuriating that we are at this point where the other communities are clearly adopted these, these notions, and this, this kind of change in our, where we live, I think is so important, and I hope we can get this passed sometime, I mean, I feel it's been, been dragging our feet. And that's all I have to say, I've just been fed up watching, watching people using bags day in and day out, and I feel this about the charging, I mean, what better way to charge, to charge a customer, to incentivize them to maybe bring it back, bring back their, bring back their bags, and use them, the reusable bags is what I mean. I, I think it's a process of change, that we all have to adapt and get used to it, and I just hope it goes, it just seems like it's been forever, I'm a pessimist, I would just like to see it happen, and, you know, I know there's a lot of stuff, bureaucratic stuff that needs to be addressed, and, and that's it.
Okay.
I have nothing else to say.
Thank you for your comments.
Thanks, bye.
Hi, just real quick, last day to register to vote is October 21st, last day to apply for your mail ballot is October 29th, and Election Day is November 5th. If anyone has any questions, need help to get to the polls, definitely reach out, thank you.
We are adjourned.